And direction as we deliberate on the business of this county. Continue to be with us and bless us, we pray. In the name of Jesus, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If everyone would push your present button on the roll call. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Saint Commissioner Brian Batford and Commissioner Jeff Ford.
Commissioner Ford is unable to attend and I've not heard from Commissioner Batford. We hope he's well. Oh, okay. First item of business is approval of the minutes of the February fourteenth County Commission meeting. Proper motion by Commissioner Wilson, second Commissioner Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Also, we need to approve the Highway Commission minutes that were mailed to you. Commissioner Cook? First and Commissioner Hayes the second, all in favor? All right. Commissioner Jones is asked to speak before we move on. Commissioner Ricky Jones?
Yes, during the recent weeks since the tax study committee met and voted to recommend approval of pursuing a resolution to authorize a referendum to increase the local option sales tax by point five percent. There has been much discussion about the need, the process, and the options. As sponsor of the resolution, I feel that additional time would be our best interest and is needed to continue to gather and review additional information. Some of the additional information for consider will come from the following. Property reappraisal process along with the state certified tax rate will be forthcoming after April first. The county mayor will complete meeting with city officials for discussions relative to sharing the proposed increase in local option sales tax prior to April first. And the school board will have met and approved the two thousand eleven and twelve proposed budget for submission in accordance with the April first statutory deadline. Therefore, I'm requesting that resolution number three eleven four will be pulled for later consideration.
Thank you. Commissioner Jones is the maker, has pulled resolution three eleven four. So we will take that off the agenda. There's also companion resolution, which is three eleven ten, signed by Commissioner Green.
Adjusted and pull that resolution, I will pull three eleven ten also.
Okay, so we will pull three eleven four and three eleven ten. Okay, thank you. Next item on the agenda is citizens' communication. Okay. We have four people speak. I want to remind everyone that this is a legislative meeting and we request that you be respectful. And first one I have is Chuck Shelton. If you'd come up and state your name and your address, please.
My name is Chuck Shelton, my address is three twelve Potters Court, Franklin. And I want to speak to the commissioners about last meeting's vote on the county debt. First, I want to thank Commissioner Ryan for his introduction of the spending cap of five hundred and fifty million and the super majority requirement needed to raise it. Also, thanks to all of you who stood with Commissioner Ryan. Stunned, astounded, befuddled describes me the moment I looked up at the screen and saw that only five of my county commissioners voted for this approach to reason. Please reconsider the debt cap. My conclusions are, we need a debt ceiling. Even the mismanaged federal budget process has a debt ceiling. The super majority is good. Super majorities are in the U.S. Constitution for ratifying treaties as well as for overriding a presidential veto. Another reason is, we should not be thinking of how much debt we can handle, but how much we can rid ourselves of because debt requires service expenses. Our bond rating is not relevant to this argument. Some think that our current debt service of fifty million will decrease as our bonds are paid off. However, if we do not pay down our debt, we probably will need to refinance these bonds at the present or higher interest rates. And finally, we need to police ourselves with a super majority. The county commission membership will change over the years. People of perhaps lesser quality might come on who will need the restraint of a cap and super majority. Thank you for the time, please reconsider the debt ceiling, thank you.
Have to speak is Kevin Kukagi. Hope I pronounced that correctly.
Kukagi.
Kukagi.
One thirty-eight Cliff Run, Franklin, Tennessee. As I said, my name is Kevin Kukagi and I'm the chairman of the Williamson County Republican Party. And in light of the deferral of the vote tonight, some of this becomes not moot by any means, but certainly not as timely as it would have. However, I do believe that I owe it to the people who are supporting me and ask me to come up and make the position known of the party to let you know why I'm here. I'm here with and stand with the, not only the Republican Party of Williamson County, but with the Republican women of Williamson County, the nine twelve project of Tennessee, and also the Williamson County Taxpayers Coalition. And we're here to voice our concerns and actually the concerns of the members, not only of our groups, but many others in the community regarding that vote, which was just deferred, on whether or not to send a sales tax proposal increase to referendum. It's important to realize that the argument advanced by the proponents of this tax increase has been basically centered around the schools and the children. Yet while announcing their belief that our children are our most important assets, these same communications have threatened to withhold children's benefits if we don't go along with a tax increase. This is basic rhetoric. I find it immoral and irresponsible, especially from Williamson County, which is deemed the most conservative friendly county in America. It's disappointing. I've received a number of copies of form letters, and I'm sure you have as well, circulated by PTO presidents urging Williamson County parents to contact their commissioners and school board members in advance of tonight's meeting. While these letters claim to simply encourage public expression of opinion on the issue, the content of the communications was anything but unbiased. An uncritical reading would lead anyone to believe that there's no alternative to sales tax increase. Therefore, in order to balance this discussion and to provide an opportunity for those in the community who do not believe that any imposition of new taxes is warranted, the Williamson County Republican Party is hosting a town hall and we are formally inviting all of the commissioners to attend. That will happen on March thirty-first in this building from seven to nine P.M. And we would encourage you to come out and answer the questions of the community about this issue. If we take seriously our designation as the most conservative friendly county in America, and I do, then we can't look the other way when the county moves to add tax burdens instead of cutting spending like the rest of us. The Williamson County Republican Party has a responsibility to stand for and defend Republican principles, including limited government, free enterprise, and individual liberty, all of which are threatened by a tax increase. And a sales tax, a sales tax especially, is insidious because it disproportionately affects the poor. Some of the proponents of the sales tax have also sought cover by responding that state law requires that it go to referendum and that we should therefore let the people decide. Now, while noble, the part that is conveniently omitted is that it costs the taxpayers at least one hundred thousand dollars just to send it to referendum. We elected our commissioners to mine the store and to watch the money. Kicking it back to the taxpayers instead of making responsible cuts is not leadership. Last month, we watched this commission display an unwillingness to discipline itself by refusing to accept a modest proposal to cap the county's already excessive tax debt. Oh, sorry, excessive debt, our debt, which stands at currently almost five hundred million dollars. Instead of making hard decisions, of forcing the school board and other offices to cut spending, the commission appears to be little more than a rubber stamp. If the schools really need the money for which they instinctively clamor, I would challenge the superintendent, if I were in your position, I would challenge the school board to direct its campaign efforts. Instead of asking parents to vote for a tax increase, ask them to volunteer contributions. If your cause is just, then the parents will respond. You have it in your power to adopt a new approach, one that reflects the reality of our current fiscal situation. Our community is not insulated from the problems of the rest of the nation. You only have to check our local public records, and I would urge you to do that, to see the increase, significant increase, of bankruptcies and foreclosures right here in Williamson County, Tennessee. Asking the public to even consider the imposition of a new tax would be, in my opinion, covering for a lack of fiscal restraint. I believe that that shows disregard for the public trust which has been conferred upon you by our votes. If this commission is unable to exercise its own internal checks and balances, then the community will. Thank you.
Thank you. Next citizen we have is J.R. Van Damme.
My name is J.R. Van Damme, excuse me. Three oh eight Spring House Circle, Franklin, Tennessee. On December twenty-two nineteen forty-four, there was a town in Belgium named Bastogne. It was surrounded by Germans. The German commander went to General McCauley, excuse me if I murder his name, and asked him to surrender. His response is in every history book ever made, nuts. And that's what I say to you people about your vote, not to have some fiscal restraint. I'm surrounded. I'm not sure what I'm surrounded by. I thought I was surrounded by fellow conservatives. I am surrounded by five of them. Welcome to Bastogne. The rest of you, I'm not accusing you of being the Germans or the Nazis or anything like that. But I don't know what I'm surrounded by. What we are surrounded by is fourteen trillion dollars worth of debt. Now, every one of you did vote for bonds, and I know that you think bonds, I think one commissioner, I don't remember who it was, stated that they thought a bond was income. A bond is not income. That's just our tax money, our hard-earned labor, coming from either the state or the federal government. Almost a million dollars was sent to TMA. I don't agree with everything that those people do with that money. It's wasteful. It's abusive. Do we really need a TV show out of these people? Is that what we're going to spend our money on? When we're trying to find eight million dollars supposedly to teach our kids? That's what we're going to spend our money on? Every red cent that's sent to TMA is a loan to the Chinese. Do you understand that? Now, I'd like to thank Commissioner Jones up there for putting off the fracas that got started. But I've read the emails too, and some of the things that have been said, and little notes put in backpacks and things like this. I don't appreciate these thug tactics. I've lived in Wisconsin. I got taxed out of Wisconsin. In nineteen ninety, I saw where that was going. I voted with my feet. Now, I may be surrounded, but I'm not surrendering. I like it here. But you people have got to start to understand that all of this money is not income. It's our hard-earned labor and it's not to be spread around. If I want to spread it around, on Sunday, I'll put it in the collection plate. On Saturday, I'll go help somebody move out of section eight housing. It seems amazing to me that somebody is asking for eight million dollars for our kids. Last week, we spent over twenty minutes talking about whether to spend three hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars or three hundred and thirty thousand dollars to fix a football field. Are we playing the Super Bowl at Centennial next year? How about we ask some parents who have some landscaping equipment or whatever it takes, ask again for some donations? Good grief, think of something but three hundred and thirty thousand dollars to fix a football field. But like I said, all of a sudden, there was a, Dr. Looney had a million dollars in slush funds. But now this week, we need to get rid of all the nurses, all the buses, and everything else to come up with eight million dollars. I don't know about you, but I'm confused. Not only surrounded, but confused. I don't appreciate the Wisconsin-style tactics.
Thirty seconds.
I don't appreciate the Wisconsin-style tactics going on here. This is Tennessee. This is Williamson County. This is not how we fix our problems. Thank you.
The last citizen we have is Ruth Winget.
My name is Ruth Winget and I live at ten thirteen Moreland Boulevard, Brentwood, Tennessee. What Mr. Kukagi said and the following gentlemen, if I were articulate the way they are, would say everything I feel. I am so disappointed in my county commission. Please listen to the people. We have asked you, don't keep spending. Stop it. Last time, you raised the budget ceiling. Do you know how much we're paying for taxes? Do you know that our assessments are going up again on property? Do you know that gasoline is going up? I live on a fixed income. I'm a retired teacher. I don't have the money for all of this. It's got to stop. And I want to say for the lady in the newspaper who had the list of cuts that you could consider, would you read them, please? I'm a teacher and let me tell you, in education, I can give you thousands and thousands of dollars you can cut. Do you know how many copies are run every day that don't need to be run? I can use my books three or four times over again. Give me a chalkboard and a piece of chalk and I can teach the children anything. Today, I have computers. I have large screen TVs. Have you heard of Khan Academy, run by Bill Gates? I can go on the computer and I can get over twenty-one hundred videos of things that are being taught to children. And I can leave the classroom as a teacher and leave two aides and the big TV on. And the kids can learn from that. We can revamp our educational system. Another sample that is amazing to me was when I taught in Georgia years ago. They had this wonderful program and they sunk millions of dollars into it. It was called Career Ladder. I went through the hoops and the loops and I learned how to do it and I was able to earn four thousand dollars more a year just by doing that. Did I become a better teacher? No. Did I learn anything that I hadn't known already before? Yeah, how to go through hoops and loops. And I came here. And do you know the very year I came here, they instituted that program in our schools? And Georgia just got rid of it. They knew it didn't work. They realized that millions of dollars had been lost. And yet, did we pay attention to what they had happened to have happened in their state? No, we went right ahead and instituted here and now we're dropping it. I can give you thousands of samples of how to cut back on education. It is an empty hole we're throwing our money into. Please, cut back. Find a way. Ask for the common person's help. I'll come, I'll sit with you, I'll take you through the schools, I'll show you. I also want to know if you all understand what it is to live on a limited budget. I did not teach for twenty years in this state, so I only get eighteen years. So I do not have a pension to go to. But even if I did, I am sorry I'm on the side that is against the unions. We don't need all of this. We need 401Ks. There are so many ways you can cut back, folks. Even teachers are telling you, we don't need all of this. The health care, do you know that you can retire early and get health care until you're sixty-five for free as a teacher? That's ridiculous. If I retire early, then I can go out and double dip, I can pay for my own health care. Folks, please listen to us. This is a conservative community and I am so disappointed. And I'm sorry, but I've tried to get in touch with Ed Bain over and over again. I can't even find an email for you, sir.
Next item on the agenda is communications and messages. They've asked me from the TV department, we're having some issues with the microphones, so try not to touch them, they're very fragile and we hate to lose them tonight. So until they get those issues worked out. A couple of things I want to thank, Deputy Lynn Sutton, Andy Ogles, and Rick Dreskal for being here. Also want to welcome Sean Alcorn. And Sean, I don't see you now, if you'll stand up. Sean is working on his Eagle Scout merit badge, so we're welcome, glad to have you here, sir. Thank you. And the next item I've got on communications and messages and Commissioner Brockman had asked me about is the Centennial High School.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. There was a proposal, a resolution last month that was deferred. And the thought being that the funds that were requested to be used for Centennial High School to solve the irrigation issue around their athletic field could be examined by our highway department and our parks department. They have looked at it and determined it is not a project that they're able to take on. So I would ask that we support that resolution tonight.
Okay, and we'll hear that under unfinished business. So, next item is communications and reports, County Mayor Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In fact, I'd have David come up and give us a snapshot of the last thirty days.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, we'll go through the normal reports we give each month. The first item is the February privilege tax. And then we have the chart outlining those for the last about three and a half to four years. It's not a record month, but if you'll notice, this February was the best February we've had in four years. And as we always say, we'll take any bit of good news. So that is a good report on the privilege tax. We hope we could see a trend started on that. The monthly reports of the budgets, I believe you have two of those. You have January and February. We just finished the numbers for February today, but we wanted to go ahead and get you the most up-to-date information that we could. So everything appears to be in order there. If you'll see, the revenue percentages are quite ahead of the average and that's primarily because of December, January, February property tax payments. Those are your biggest months for that and that'll be slowing down the next few months. And then finally, we have two months reports from the Cool Springs Conference Center. The month of January, we received a check of nineteen thousand four hundred and thirty-two dollars. And for the month of February, we received a check of twenty-three thousand four eleven. And, Mr. Chairman, I'll answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Coleman. Any questions? I see none, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, as Tom Fleming is making his way up here. Tom is with the Comptroller's Office, who works in the area of redistricting and reapportionment. Sometime this week, I was talking to Joe Horn sometime latter part of this week and early next week. The census status should be into the hands of the Tennessee folks to start this processing. I thought it would be good for you all to kind of understand what will occur. Since the last time we have done this, it's been ten years for you that have been around a few years. You will remember back in nineteen ninety when we'd redistricting. That was done by a six panel, six individuals from your body. The seventh was chosen at large. You do have to pull those numbers together, redo those lines for this coming year. That has to be done by twelve thirty-one. In the year two thousand, when we did this, the method was used was that the committee as a whole, all twenty-four, served on that functioning body and to be able to come up with those numbers. So we've got two different examples. I think Tom would probably lean towards the one we did in nineteen ninety as opposed to trying to have twenty-four county commissioners and others involved in it. But nevertheless, he is here today, tonight, to answer and address some of your questions and concern. And you should have on your desk, if you want to kind of follow along a bullet point, local redistricting quick reference point. So, Tom, thanks for coming down. Tom actually lives here in Williamson County, up in the grassland area, and we appreciate you being here.
Welcome, Mr. Fleming.
Thank you, Mayor and Mr. Chairman, County Commissioners. It's certainly good to be here. I see some familiar faces and some that were here probably ten years ago and so forth. I'm going to be very brief. You do have before you a quick reference guide. And before I get started, I want to introduce two people that are here with me tonight that will be doing and are really the nuts and bolts behind this redistricting as far as the Comptroller's Office is concerned. And I want them to stand. It's David Turpak, he's our GIS manager, and Matthew Hill, our GIS technician. They will be the ones that will be, as they say, the boots on the ground. Now, I'm going to just go through briefly some guidelines here. And first of all, what is redistricting? The mayor said, you know, there were several here that were new members and, you know, just to kind of briefly give you an overview. Ten years ago, we had a special meeting of the entire county commission and had a PowerPoint presentation in which we went through a little bit more in detail in redistricting. And we'd be glad to do that again if at some point in time you want to do that. But what is redistricting? It delineates of the county commission district lines. It sets out the county commission district lines. It's drawing of the lines. What is reapportionment? Equal representation in the districts, as near equal as possible. As you heard Mayor Anderson say, the last time that you had the redistricting, it was two thousand and one. The Constitution of the State of Tennessee requires that counties do the redistricting and reapportionment at least once every ten years. And that, what you are use, what you use in redistricting and reapportionment is the most recent census information. And that information, the population information, we believe will be in our hands at some time within, excuse me, this week or next week. We're coming down the homestretch. The Census Bureau has to have it to us by April one. Now, that doesn't mean that we can start immediately with doing the redistricting. There's still a lot of work that has to be done with the data. But it's the most recent census information that has to be used. The deadline for completing county commission, you have until January one, two thousand and twelve. It's not an option of whether to do redistricting and reapportionment. The Constitution requires it. You can, as you look at your districts and as you look at reapportionment and redistricting in Williamson County, the Constitution allows you to increase your number of commissioners. We have twenty-four in Williamson County. You can only have twenty-five. That's the most that you can have, so you could increase it by one. Or you can decrease it. We're here in Williamson County, we have twelve districts with two members in each district. So that's things that you will be able to look at. The districts that you draw must be contiguous and compact. They just can't ramble all over the place just to have some lines. The population needs to be as near equal as possible. Let's just take a hypothetical situation. If you had a hundred thousand, if you had a hundred thousand population and you had ten commissioners, each commissioner would represent ten thousand people, near as. And that's not voters now, that's population. That's population. So there is a difference between the voters and the population. It's population that you're dividing. you're dividing. Minority representation, if there is areas that have a large majority minority, then those need to be represented. Census maps, blocks will be used to aggregate census blocks into county commission districts. That's where, that's the backbone of that redistricting process. Okay, what are you, what are the steps that you take? Now, you heard Mayor Anderson say, talking about a, set up a redistricting committee. This is my, this will be my third redistricting process, and we have found that, and recommend that a committee, smaller than the committee of the whole, the committee of the whole will certainly be the ones that decide on the districts, but a smaller committee can work and bring a plan or multiple plans back to the entire committee and, or the entire commission, and you will have an opportunity to vote on that. It's not an exclusion of anyone, we don't want anyone, wouldn't want anyone to be excluded. So, we recommend setting up a redistricting committee. We recommend that that committee include your administrator of election. Why do we say that? Because as part of this process, precincts have to be drawn as well, and who knows where those are better than the administrator of election and the election committee, commission. We also, you probably are going to have to have some legal advice, we recommend that that be part of your process. Now, important process, you, excuse me, that, first of all, all meetings are open. All meetings available, if it's a committee, if it's a committee of the whole or whatever, the meetings have to be posted, and all committees, information, all committees work is open. You need to keep minutes and records, and it's subject to the Open Records Act, and to the Open Meetings Act. Now, where do you start? Generally, counties start with existing districts. They start with existing districts. The first one of these I did, I did with maps, paper maps, and just laid them out and looked at the existing districts. Well, in Williamson County, that's going to be a little difficult to do, but that's where you'll start, because we've had a forty percent increase in population since two thousand. So, we've also had a shift in population in Williamson County, so that will, but that's still, that's where you'll, more than likely where you'll start. After the redistricting is complete, the election commission will establish the precincts, and that's why, you see now, why I say that that administrator of election needs to be part of your process. Precincts can't split county commission districts. Precincts can't split county commission districts. Williamson County has a great GIS department, and a knowledgeable administrator of elections. These people are the ones that also, that helped you in two thousand, those that were here, will remember that. Our office is available for advice and assistance, and we'll be glad to, I'll be glad Rogers, the mayor knows where I live, and he knows how to get in touch with me, and so does Diane, so, and I'll probably send you to ask David Turpak or Matthew Hill to assist you, but I'm certainly available. And lastly, I'll say is just keep in mind that the process has to be complete by January one, two thousand and twelve. Now, we're anticipating that we will, by the time we, if we get the data sometime this week or next week, it's going to take us a couple of months or so to get the data and the geography put together, so that it will be able to work with the various counties. Your GIS department will probably do that for you, so it should give you plenty of time, I know it seems like a short period of time, but it's a big process, but it's something that you don't have a choice against, and I'll answer any questions if you should have them.
Any questions for Mr. Fleming?
Thank you very much.
I see none, thank you.
Good luck.
We will look forward to working with you.
Mr. Chairman, that completes our report. I would encourage you, between now and the next thirty to forty-five days, go ahead and get your steering committee back together so they can start talking and discussing how we want to deal with this, as soon as the census data is made available to us, that'll come through your steering committee. That's it, Mr. Chairman, any questions, unless you have some questions?
Any follow-up questions, Mayor Anderson? I see none, thank you. Next department head, we have Dr. Mike Looney, Director of Schools.
Good evening, Commissioners. Really don't have anything new to report, we don't have any new items on your agenda tonight, so I'm here to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions for Dr. Looney? I see none, but don't run off.
Thank you.
Commissioner Ryan?
Sorry, there is, that was quick. It will take a little bit more than that. Like many of the other county commissioners, Dr. Looney, my email has begun filling up with concern probably is not a fair adjective of the parents that are getting in touch with us. I think the term frantic is probably a little bit more apt. Lot of rumors going on out there about some of the cuts that you're proposing if this referendum is not passed, and I'd like to hear them from you right now in front of the county commission as far as what we're looking at, the cuts that you're going to propose, if the referendum does not pass.
Right. Well, first of all, let me say, there are a lot of rumors and innuendos going out there, and many of them are not true. As you know, our Board of Education has not approved the budget yet, nor has a budget been submitted to this body. I would say this, though, that should the budget that we, that the board ultimately pass, make it to this body, and it fail, then the school board would be placed in a difficult position of being forced to look at cuts. The cuts that the board has received from me as possibilities are as follows. The potential reduction or elimination of transportation services. As you may know, transportation services are not a requirement according to state law. It includes the elimination of nursing positions, the elimination of purchasing textbooks, and the possibility of eliminating teaching positions up to eighty.
Okay. In terms of the school buses, obviously, we have, we have a fairly large fleet, my understanding is north of two hundred buses, is that a fair estimate?
Approximately two hundred and thirty for next school year scheduled.
Okay. And from my understanding as well, each of those school buses costs approximately ninety thousand dollars. If we're getting out of the transportation business, that's a large fleet that will be sitting there depreciating, what is, what is your plan to do with that fleet of buses?
Well, my plan is for you to pass the budget that's reasonable, so I can service the boys and girls of Williamson County.
I understand that, Dr. Looney, and I appreciate that, and we understand the difficult position that you're in, but if you make the decision to eliminate school buses, what's the plan to do with that fleet?
Well, it's not my decision to make, it's the Board of Education's decision to make, it's my position to make recommendations, but if the board should to choose to do that, then obviously we would begin selling off those buses.
Okay. Thank you very much.
I see. Mr. Dan?
Would you, in that case, would you give back the million dollars that we just passed so you could buy eleven new buses?
Would I give back? Ms. Dan, are you flirting with me?
I'm referring to the resolution we passed recently where we gave you a million dollars to buy eleven new school buses because of the zoning, would that come back to the commission?
No.
Any further questions? I see none.
Thank you.
Do we have any further, Chairman, needs to speak? I see none, moving on. Next item, item nine, Elections and Appointments. First one we have is Emergency Communications District Board of Directors, four-year term, Districts Three and Twelve, Representative Tom Neal, term expiring, nomination Tom Neal.
Second.
Commissioner Hayes, the motion, Commissioner Cook, the second. Can we just vote on these all at one time?
Uh, no.
Okay.
About all at once?
Huh?
All three of those at once?
All three at once? Yeah, okay.
That's what he was asking.
Oh, I thought you were asking about the entire.
Yeah. Districts Ten and Eleven, Representative, term expiring, Houston Nairn Jr., nomination, Houston Nairn Jr. Barnwell and Commissioner Little, the second. In Districts Eight and Nine, Representative, Robert Ring, term expiring, nomination, Robert Ring.
Second.
Commissioner Brockman, Commissioner Cook, the second. All in favor of these nominations, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nominations pass. Williamson County Regional Planning Commission, four-year term, term expiring, Tom Murdock, nomination, Tom Murdock.
Second.
Commissioner Wilson, the motion, Commissioner Dan, the second, is that right? No, oh, Commissioner Hester, I'm sorry. And term expiring, John Lackey, nomination, John Lackey. Commissioner Bane, the motion, Commissioner Chalafont, the second. All in favor of these two planning commission members signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, they pass unanimously. Moving on down, the Highway Commission, two years term, expiring, three thirteen. The Northwest District, Stan Tyson, term expiring, nomination, Stan Tyson.
Second.
Commissioner Williams, motion, Commissioner Davis, the second. Northeast District, Richard Folks, term expiring, nominations, Richard Folks.
Second.
Commissioner Wilson.
Second.
Commissioner Williams, the second. All in favor of these Highway Commissioners, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, they pass unanimously. Zoning Appeals Board, five-year term, expiring March of sixteen. Karen Emerson McPeak, term expiring, nomination, Karen Emerson McPeak.
Second.
Hayes on the motion, Cook on the second. All in favor of Karen Emerson McPeak, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Moving on to the consent agenda, the only thing on the consent agenda is notaries, all entertain a motion.
Second.
Commissioner Brockman, second, Commissioner Smith. And if you're in favor of the consent agenda, push the yes button, opposed, your no button. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-one yes, and one in state.
And it passes. Unfinished business, we've got the Centennial Drainage Issue on the football field.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This resolution came along with the wastewater upgrades at Hillsborough School, and we divided that particular resolution and deferred the portion that was designated for Centennial High School. These are funds that are coming from leftover capital projects within their, the school budget, and it passed education originally seven to zero, as amended.
Do we have discussion on that? Do we need a second? Get it on the.
Need a second.
I'll need a second. Commissioner Smith, the second. So, do we have discussions? Commissioner Hayes?
I just wanted to know if that had been bid. I understand that Doug and Eddie looked at it and couldn't, couldn't do what needed to be done, but has that been officially bid?
Dr. Looney, please.
No, ma'am, it has not been bid, so this is an estimate. We obviously don't bid projects generally until we secure funding, but the amended version of this plan would be to use leftover construction dollars from Summit High School, so we would not be able to proceed the way that this resolution is amended until after we have closed out Summit High School's construction and use the residual from that.
I believe that maybe Commissioner Herbert had mentioned there might be some other ball fields that might need some attention to, such as Page. Would it not be wise to wait and put them all together and take a look at all that needs to be done, and what is the reason for doing it now as opposed to waiting?
Yes, ma'am, as you may recall, we had a student that was injured on this particular field, and as a result, you know, we're trying to balance student safety versus need, and in this case, we felt that student safety in this particular matter was a priority, where some other schools certainly have needs, but not to the point where students could potentially be injured. This one, we do have, we do have that scenario, so it's why we're recommending its approval.
Thank you.
Follow-up, Commissioner Hayes?
No.
Commissioner Little?
My question is, the original resolution, we amended it to say that the funds had to come from leftover funds, does that amendment still apply to this part of it?
Yes. Commissioner Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dr. Looney spoke to my issues.
Oh, okay. Commissioner Langston?
Dr. Looney, I appreciate the information that you're giving us, and again, I'd like to simply state, this is not work to be done on the Centennial Football Field.
That's correct.
I want to make that very clear. It is a dangerous situation in a drainage area that surrounds the football field. Our people did go out, and they did look at it as the commission asked them to do last, or last month, and they felt they could not do it for the, or couldn't be done for the amount of money. It's a safety issue, we've had individuals ask, Dr. Looney and committee, does, and I looked over the things that were there, does any of this money go to reconstruction or work on siding or anything else other than football field, other than what might be damaged on this issue?
No, sir, there are no field quote-unquote upgrades to this project. This is to mitigate the safety issue relating to the drainage, the storm drainage in between the football field and the track. If there, obviously, there's sprinkler systems under the ground, there's wiring under the ground that has to be worked around, and so this is partially why this project is so expensive.
Thank you.
Y'all ready to vote? If you're in favor of the expenditure at Centennial High School Football Field, push the yes button, opposed, your no button. Anyone wishing to change their vote? Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty yes, two no.
It passes. All right, moving on to new business. Resolution three, eleven, one, resolution appropriating and amending the two thousand ten, two thousand and eleven Parks and Recreation Budget by two hundred dollars, revenues to come from reserve fund. Commissioner Little?
Move for approval.
Proper motion, Commissioner Cook, the second. Explanation, Commissioner Little?
Committee reports.
Oh, I'm sorry. Committee report, Parks and Rec?
Six, four, zero, against.
Budget?
Five, four, zero, against.
Now, explanation, Commissioner Little.
Yes, this is a scholarship that's been done for several years, and it's coming out of their reserve funds for scholarship.
Any questions to the maker? I see none. If you're ready to vote, push the yes button, opposed, your no button. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so now. Record, that was me. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-two yes.
It passes unanimously. Resolution three, eleven, two, resolution appropriating and amending the two thousand ten, eleven Parks and Rec Budget by nine thousand, three hundred, thirty-five dollars, revenues to come from donations. Commissioner Little?
Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Green, the second. Committee reports, Parks and Rec?
Six, four, zero, against.
Budget Committee?
Budget Committee, five, four, zero, against.
Explanation, Commissioner Little?
Yes, this is for the basketball referees and supervision coming out of the fees that were paid.
Very good. Any questions? I see none. If you're ready to vote, push the yes button, opposed, your no button. Opposed, your no button. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-two yes.
Passes unanimously. Resolution three eleven three, resolution appropriating and amending the two thousand ten, eleven detention budget by eighty-four thousand seven hundred and forty-six dollars thirty-nine cents, revenues to come from miscellaneous refunds. Commissioner Langston?
Move approval.
Second.
Commissioner, was it Smith, the second? Committee reports, law enforcement?
Five, in favor, zero against.
Budget Committee?
Five, four, zero against, I'm sorry.
Explanation, Commissioner Langston?
This is money given in regard to expenses that we've incurred handling state prisoners. This is reimbursement for medical expenses, and it simply is a reimbursement.
Very good. Any questions? I see none. Ready to vote? All in favor, push the yes button. Opposed, your no button. Anyone like to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-two yes.
Passes unanimously. Resolution appropriating and amending the two thousand ten, eleven County Clerk's Budget by five thousand one hundred dollars, revenues to come from reserve funds. Commissioner Green?
Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Little, the second. Budget Committee?
Budget Committee voted five, four, zero against.
Explanation, Commissioner Green?
Yes, the computer programs in the office, County Clerk's office has surpassed its lifespan, and the server needs to be upgraded, and the funds being used are, that the State of Tennessee remits three dollars per title back to the county, and that's where the funds are coming from to pay for this.
Okay. Any questions? I see none. All in favor, push the yes button. Opposed, your no button. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so now. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-two yes.
Passes unanimously. Resolution three eleven nine, resolution appropriating and amending the two thousand ten, eleven Juvenile Services Budget by fifteen thousand dollars, revenues to come from unappropriated county general funds received from participant fees. Commissioner Green?
Move approval, second.
Commissioner Langston, the second. Committee reports, did it go in front of law enforcement?
Yes. Five, four, zero against.
Okay. Budget Committee?
Budget Committee voted five, four, zero against.
Explanation, Commissioner Green?
This is the Williams County Judicial Services, they issue, they do screening for drugs, and they charge the fee to do that, and that is approximately sixteen thousand seven hundred and twenty-five dollars being received to date. There's also contracts with other counties for housing juveniles in the detention center that cost a hundred and twenty-five dollars a day for approximately fifty-four thousand six hundred and twenty-five. There's no need for funding other than additional drug testing and detention expenses to pay for this.
Very good. Any questions? I see none. If you're in favor, push the yes button. Opposed, your no button. Anyone wanting to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-two yes.
Passes unanimously. Resolution authorizing the county mayor to execute a non-exclusive use agreement with Outdoor Encounter Incorporated for the construction of a walking trail through Heritage Park. Commissioner Little?
Move for approval.
Commissioner Hayes, the second. Parks and Rec Committee?
Six, four, zero against.
Budget Committee?
Budget Committee voted five, four, zero against.
Explanation, Commissioner Little?
Yes, the Outdoor and Incorporated Group have agreed to, or have requested to build a trail, a walking trail around Heritage Park. It will be ADA compliant, it will be open for everyone, and it calls for no county expenditures. Any other questions, I refer to Mr. Doug Hood.
Very good. Commissioner Hayes?
Yes, I serve as a advisory council on this nonprofit, and they have already received fifteen thousand dollar donation from the city of town of Thompson Station, and a private fifteen thousand dollar donation, and were a part of the Sweet Tea Festival last year at the Home Spun Manor, and home, yeah, Homestead Manor, sorry, in Thompson Station, and raised about twenty-five hundred there, so it will be no expense to the county, but we'll give access through walking trails through part of Heritage Park, and then we'll connect the Thompson Station Park. So it's part of an area. The fact that we have sewer and water there is a great contribution to that walking trail also.
Very good. Thank you, Commissioner Hayes. Any further questions? I see none. Ready to vote? All in favor, push the yes button. Opposed, your no button. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-two yes.
Passes unanimously. Resolution three eleven six, resolution authorizing the Williamson County Mayor to execute an agreement with Pepsi Beverages Company. Commissioner Little?
Move for approval. Second.
Commissioner Williams, the second. Committee reports, Parks and Rec?
Five and, six in favor, zero against.
Budget Committee?
Budget Committee voted five, four, zero against.
Explanation, Commissioner Little?
Yes, this is at the softball complex of the, on, off Ninety-Six out there, Trinity Road. It, the scoreboards on the six fields are out, and Pepsi is agreed to replace the scoreboards in exchange for selling their products at the park.
Very good. Any questions? Commissioner Williams?
It's also my understanding that Coca-Cola refuses to get back in the scoreboards.
Yeah, I think that's correct.
Because Commissioner Brockman was gonna bring that up, that she liked Coke best.
I'll drink to that.
Oh, I'm on public record.
Yeah. Y'all ready to vote? If you're in favor, push the yes button. Opposed, your no button. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-two yes.
One thing, I need to make a correction earlier, and it slipped my mind, that Commissioner Betherard had notified me that he would not be here, so for the record, we wanted to change that. That's all we have on the agenda. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you.